All right. Welcome, everybody. I am calling to order this National Board of Education meeting. It is September 6th at 6:05. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Raymond, will you do roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Darling is not here this evening. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Gilio is not here. Ms. Raymond is here. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Odin is not here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. We also have Dr. Andre, Dr. Sarfati, Mr. Poska, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Duffy, and we also have our student member, Armani Rogers.
Thank you. When you're finished with the prayer, Ms. Johnson, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen.
Thank you. I got used to them fast. First on the agenda tonight, we have Mike Rankie from the Nashua Soup Kitchen to do a presentation for us. Will you please join us?
I would love to. Again, my name is Michael Rankie. I'm with Nashua. Can you all hear me? No.
Yeah, is the light on?
The light seems green.
Yep.
We're good. You can hear me. You can hear me anyway. So again, my name is Michael Rankie. I'm with the Nashua Soup Kitchen Shelter. And I'm here today to tell you a little bit about what you already know, a little bit about what we've been doing, and then also to ask for your support. I have to say, just starting off, that I'm a little disappointed because my understanding was like, these meetings would oftentimes go to midnight. And I was like, I have my entertainment for the entire Tuesday evening. And I understand that I may be your longest presentation today. So I'll try to get out of your way. So you have your hand out here. I think it's going to be available maybe on the web or something for folks. I want to talk to you about a little bit about Nashua Meals for Kids. Nashua Meals for Kids came about because we were hearing from teachers. This was back in 2016, 2017. When I first got here, I started with a Soup Kitchen and Shelter in 2016, that the teachers were saying that there were kids coming in who maybe didn't have dinner the night before, or maybe had a bag of Doritos for dinner the night before. And as wonderful as Doritos are, they're not dinner. And it would mean that like kids would come in in the morning, and you know, if you haven't had, I don't know about you, but I still, when I haven't had dinner, I wake up the next morning, I'm a little cranky, you know? And I'm a grownup. And so imagine like a six, a seven, and eight, you know, even a 15, 16-year-old hasn't had dinner the night before. They're not going to come in ready to learn. They may come in feeling kind of rundown because you haven't had food. They may come in feeling like a little agitated, might want to like get into a fight or something like that. Again, because food nutrition is really, really important. So we developed this program, Nashua Meals for Kids. We've been doing it with Southern New Hampshire Services, the United Way, Salvation Army, the Healthy New Hampshire Foundation, partnering with you, the school district, Ending 68 Hours of Hunger, and the Corpus Christi Food Pantry. And we said, how can we try to make sure that kids have access to food three meals a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year? In short, we had this like crazy idea that maybe Nashua could be a place where no kid is food insecure, no kid is hungry. And I realized that, on the one hand, sounds sort of audacious, how could you make that happen? And at the same time, it sounds sort of crazy. Why on earth in the United States would there be any child who doesn't have access? Not, you can't make kids eat, but if you can at least make sure that every kid has the opportunity to eat, then you can actually go a long way to like improving a whole bunch of things, including hypertension, diabetes, obesity, all are related to what kind of nutrition kids are eating. So we developed this program. I'm going to turn your, if you turn to your second page, these are things that I'm sure you already know. These are stats from the most recent time when we looked at how many kids were eligible for free and reduced lunch. And some of the statistics are pretty good. So you look at down in the bottom of the list, bicentennial school, only 11.1%, 11.2% of kids are getting free and reduced lunch. On the other hand, if you go to the Dr. Crisp School, Dr. Crisp was a major physician here in Nashua back in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, the kind of east side of Nashua. 71% of kids in Dr. Crisp School in the most recent year were getting free and reduced lunch. And to be honest, actually, those numbers are probably down, as in like they may be artificially depressed. In other years, we've seen it as high as 80%, which means that there's a lot of kids there who are needing extra food assistance. You look at middle school and high school, the numbers appear to get a little bit better, but that's because you're kind of taking schools and you're blending them together. So elementary schools tend to be more neighborhood-based, and you kind of see the effect, the impact of poverty in the neighborhood school. You bring it to the middle schools and then to the high school, things are kind of come together. You see less, it appears, from the other schools, but actually, the problem is still there. It's just, you know, it's just hidden a little bit. So again, 33, right here, we are in Nashua High School North, and last school year, 33, 34% of the kids here getting free or reduced lunch, or eligible for free or reduced lunch. And in previous years, what I've seen is that's been 40, 44%. Again, the numbers may be a little bit down. There's a lot of impact, a lot of studies in terms of what happens when kids don't have access to food. And we cite one study here by the American Academy of Pediatrics that says, when kids have access to nutrition, when they are food secure, there's a whole lot of things that happen, including they learn better and their test scores go up because you're not hungry. So it's, it's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of like complication to it. So what we decided to do is we said, okay, you know, we already make food at the Community Kitchen on 2 Quincy Street. We already make meals there for anybody who wants to come in. Usually, that's between 70 to 150 people who are coming in on any given evening. We provide between 50,000 to 70,000 meals over the course of a year. But we noticed that we were seeing very few kids. And when we thought about it, it wasn't all that surprising. If you're a kid living in the Dr. Crisp Elementary School area, that can be about a mile to two miles away from 2 Quincy Street. So you're probably not going to be walking there on your own. And if your parent might be working, as many people often do, they'll work second shift or even third shift, you know, you might not be having dinner that night. And so we said, rather than making the kids come to us and trudge across Hollis Street, East Hollis Street, or whatever else, what if we try to bring meals to them? And so we started doing that. We partnered with the Dr. Crisp School, Sherry Fuller, who I'm hoping is still the principal, but maybe she's moved on, I don't know, and Grace Tavares, who is the homeschool liaison. And Grace was really great about identifying kids that she knew needed some extra meals. And so started working with them. We started then expanding out to other schools. So we said, how can we get, how can we get food? I'm going to turn your page to page four. So we started preparing meals. I really should have brought a prop of like, so we have, they look kind of like TV dinners. And you can kind of see it there, but there's a veg, there's a meat, there's a starch. And if you, and they're, we also provide produce there, so that's kind of that second picture. But if you were to look at the labels on it, they say, you know, warm it up in three to four minutes in a microwave, in six to eight minutes in oven. Please don't confuse the two. We did have one ambitious young woman who put the meal tray in the microwave for eight minutes, and then we had to get her a new microwave. But it's really pretty straightforward, and it allows kids, if, again, if your parent is working, working second shift, working third shift, it means that you have dinner, right? And you have dinner that you can make yourself. And that was our goal, just like, let's make sure that if nutrition is an issue, if food scarcity is an issue for any kid in Nashua, then we can end it. And so we got endorsement by the mayor. That was awesome. We got a couple of articles that you may have seen in The Telegraph. Even Pleasant Lane Mall has set up a place where you can donate food to help support this effort in terms of making sure every kid in Nashua is, has enough to eat. So what we're talking, we've already rolled out in several schools, including Dr. Crisp, Ledge Street, Sunset Heights, Elm Street Middle School. I would actually mention Sunset Heights, I don't know if anybody is familiar with Tully Automotive. Tully Automotive is kind of down on Daniel Webster Highway. Turns out, the Tully Brothers went to Sunset Heights. And they said, you know what? They couldn't believe that 37% of the kids at Sunset Heights were experiencing food insecurity. And they said, we want to make sure that every kid there is, and so they sponsored that school for us. They're paying for all of the food. And we've actually been very successful in terms of raising funds to actually pay for the food. We have a, here are our priorities in terms of where we would like to go. Just for, if anybody's listening at home, Amherst, Mount Pleasant, Fairgrounds, Benetton Chuck, Nashua High School North here. We talk about our program needs. There's, the big thing here, so we're looking at freezers. The big thing here that I want to, I want to talk about in terms of what would really help us, is if we could make sure that every school had a freezer that was available, that we could then bring food to. We're happy to bring, you know, if we brought frozen meals every other week, that would be fine. If we had to bring them every week, that would be fine. If we had to bring frozen meals to a school every single day of the week, we would do that too. It's just that we want to make sure that if we prepare the meals, that there's a place where they can go, so that if a teacher, or a homeschool liaison, or a social worker, or whoever it is, you know, said, oh, you're hungry, you know what, take the, take seven, go home, you're fed for a week in terms of dinner. It complements the E68 program, which also makes sure that kids have food for the weekend. And that's really what we're coming here to talk to you about. It's, again, you already know the situation in terms of kids in Nashua who are food insecure. You now know a little bit more about what we've been doing. We started this in 2017 as a pilot, and it's been going successfully, very successfully, since then. But again, our goal is to make sure that every kid in Nashua has enough to eat, to end childhood hunger in Nashua. And the role that you could help us play is just by making sure that there is a place, a freezer, that we can bring meals to. And ideally, we wouldn't just bring frozen meals, we'd also bring fresh produce, if there's an opportunity to do that, and just make sure that every kid has access to a meal, an apple, a carrot, whatever it is, to make sure that they grow up healthy and strong. So with that, there's more to this presentation, but I think that's probably a decent place. The last page says, thank you. So I'll probably end right there. Any questions, any like, I don't know how it works, or anything like that?
Thank you. This is a great program, and I'm so thankful to have it in our schools. Pre-COVID, the board used to be able to tour the schools twice a year in the fall and the spring. And one of the questions I always asked on the tours was the free and reduced lunch numbers and what resources each school had. And 2019, well, early 2020 was the last time we did that. And all of the numbers that I recall from my little journal, I wrote those down, are significantly higher than these, like in 10 to 20% higher across the city. Do we think that that's because of the USDA's free lunch program last year? And are we prepared to ramp up again as we get the free and reduced lunch forms, since they weren't required during COVID, and now they will be as of last week?
Yes, the Free Lunch for All federal program ended, so we're going back to pre-COVID. So all students that want free and reduced lunch need to apply through the program like they did before. So the numbers will be more accurate.
Okay. But how does that, how will that affect your programming for providing meals to the students if all of a sudden, we have 10% more students, let's say, who are food insecure than we had last year? Or, you know what I mean, that are?
We're prepared, at least at this point, from what we understand the demand to be, we're prepared to make as many meals as necessary.
Okay.
You know, we have, we have people who also believe that kids in Nashua shouldn't be hungry and are prepared to support that financially. So it's more, we need a place where the meals can go.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Dr. Andre, let us know what you need from us.
Absolutely. So this was one of my first meetings in Nashua when I came in, and just the excitement of the willingness of a partner, right? So imagine if we can end food insecurity. And what does that translate into the classroom? So I was excited to have this conversation. I reached out to the building principals already, almost immediately after our conversation. So there's a lot of excitement. So we're just working through some of the details, especially at these schools identified, to make sure there's space. So I think we're in good shape, September, October timeline, but definitely by the end of October, we should have space in those six schools moving forward. So I think we're in really good shape, and we'll just have to continue our dialogue.
Okay, great. And then if a parent or employee is watching this, who feels that they know a student who could benefit from the program, what do they do?
Well, our first suggestion would be to, if there's somebody they know within the school, it might be a teacher, it might be a homeschool liaison, it might be a social worker, they should know of, hopefully, after, after tonight, they'll know of the resources that might be available. Certainly, somebody can contact us, and we will make sure that they're hooked up in a specific way. I also, so I'm just, I was also really excited about our conversation, gosh, it was three or four weeks ago, or something like that. And my hope is that this would not be the last partnership. You know, we have a lot of really awesome students who are 16, 17, 18, who could come in and maybe help make the meals. And for that matter, we also talked about a mobile kitchen that might go out, that could also even perhaps be run by, it might be 17, 18-year-old, or even 19-year-old students, or something like that. Just there's a lot of partnerships that we're hoping to have with the school district.
That's wonderful. And I know that we have programs that require our students to do some volunteer work. So, you know, like the Honor Society and some other things. So just putting a bug into the high schoolers' ears.
Yes. There you go.
So, great. Thank you so much. And thank you so much to your army of volunteers that makes this happen.
Of which I'm sure there are many right here. So thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. It looks like maybe a threshold was drawn to decide which schools would be priorities. And I see South isn't on the list, and I-
We are, we are happy to put South on the list. In fact, ideally, we would go to every school. That would be our goal.
Yeah. Originally, we were dreaming that afternoon, that 45-minute hour kind of conversation. We win everything from internships to food trucks, but we would wanted, we identified all the schools at the beginning, and we're like, what's doable? So we want to actually start small, get the logistics in place, and grow as quickly as possible. But again, the, the goal is to make sure that we're addressing or abolishing food insecurity for all of our families in Nashua.
I think that if we were able to do this, I'd love to come back, hopefully even next year, and say, we've ended childhood hunger in Nashua. You know, we would be the, as far as I know, the first major city, city, you know, major city, 90,000 people, to have ended childhood hunger. I mean, that would be, it wouldn't be just us, it would be a whole bunch of other people. All of us would be, take responsibility or be, celebrate that. But that would be an awesome goal.
Yeah. I love it. Anyone else? No? Thank you so much for coming. I'm so excited about this partnership.
Yes.
Thank you.
That was part of the media level about this right before COVID started.
Right. Yeah. My son will disagree about the Doritos aren't for dinner. I'm sure he's at home right now, enjoying some. All right. Well, thank you again. Oh, I'm so excited about this year. So going into the consent agenda, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Yes, you don't have to.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? It's like I'm auctioning off motions.
Second name.
Thank you, Ms. Lampier. Okay. Okay. On the motion to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Claffey, are you an aye?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry. We're just cutting it close today with the, with the quorum. Nays?
Nay.
Okay.
Okay, that was Ms. Johnson and Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I was looking down. I want to make sure I-
Okay. Any items removed or to add? None? Excellent. Now we have our first public, sorry, everything just started buzzing on me. We have our first public comment. Mr. Marku.
I live at 4 Jewelry Lane. I now have three students in the Nashua School District in my wallet. Thanks you, full day kindergarten. I'm president of the Nashua Teachers Union, and to follow up on what the gentleman from the Nashua Soup Kitchen said, being the parent of a student that had food insecurity before he was my child, I can tell you what a dramatic difference having three square meals a day will make on a child's life. So I'm excited to see where this goes. We are proud supporters of End 68 Hours of Hunger, the Nashua Soup Kitchen as well. So hopefully, get more bang for our buck. I'm here to speak on the MOUs. There are three. One of them, we used last year because we did not have enough substitutes or teachers to cover some classes, specifically at the high school. And it was determined between, at the time, Dr. McKinney and myself, and eventually, the board and the union, that we needed an MOU, and we bring forward the same one with a slight alteration in it. I'm in full support of the one for Franklin Street. I'd like to recognize the district for bringing that forward to me in a proactive stance with the ups and downs of what Franklin Street has had, is, and will continue to be until it's done. A lot of things out of the control of everyone here on things that are coming for the construction, or not coming in this case. And I think there's a plan in place. And is it ideal that they're not at Franklin Street now? No. But, you know, we have to make the best of the situation and keep moving forward. The final one has been the bane of my existence since I was the vice president of the Nashua Teachers Union. And I find it to be very discriminatory towards our female educators, and we finally have been able to put that to rest with this MOU. We have tried, in the last four contracts, to get rid of this language, and we finally had someone ready to push us to move forward with other ways of dealing with this. And fortunately, we were able to compromise with a MOU to deal with it until the contract is reopened. I'm happy to answer questions about those later, or say more about it offline if you'd like. But I stand fully in support of those three MOUs, and thank the district for their collaboration in finalizing the language in those. Thank you.
Thank you. No other members for public comments, so we will move right into superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm happy to report, week one of the new school year went really well. I appreciate all of our staff's efforts to ensure a smooth opening for our students. I know a lot of effort went into the thinking about bus schedules, lunch supervision, student schedules, traffic patterns, and other nuances that need attention in anticipation of the school year. But thanks to our custodians who worked this summer to ready our schools, our teachers who taught during the summer to help prepare students for the new school year, our food service staff who made sure breakfast and lunch menus were ordered, ready, and ready so our students were ready to learn, our school nurses who made sure families knew about the requirements for schools, our secretaries who made sure students were registered and families had the right paperwork on the first day, our athletic coaches who spent the last weeks preparing our teams to compete, our administrators and our human resource staff who made sure our new staff were ready for their new roles with us. Again, to all that who stepped up this summer to make the last week successful as it was, my warmest thanks. Enrollment. Officially, we will be finalizing our enrollment next month. But meanwhile, we're encouraged by the numbers of students returning to school who spent last year learning at home. Just during the month of August alone, 31 students returned from their neighborhood, returned to their neighborhood schools from being homeschooled. It's great to have them back. Junior Rotse. Congratulations to Junior Rotse, Cadets Bryson, Verenio, and Christian DeVerenia. Thank, thank you. Two of 350 cadets selected from more than 18,000 applicants to attend the U.S. Air Force Flight Academy this summer. Both earned their private pilot's license through the academy and received their class highest academic honors. Both Bryson and Christian attend Nashua High School North and are members of the class of 2023. Bryson currently serves as a group commander of the program, plays football, and wrestles, and belongs to several clubs. Christian is the program's operations commander and runs cross-country, indoor, and outdoor track. We are very proud of Bryson and Christian. I hope they have fun taking to the skies. The annual school-based flu clinic. As we do each year, our school nurses are working with the city's Division of Public Health and Community Services to provide flu vaccine clinics at the schools to each student and staff member. Public health is providing consent forms, which nurses are sending home with students. The clinics will take place in each of our schools starting the week of September 19th through late October. So it's exciting first week, and again, thank you for everyone who made it possible to run so smoothly. Thank you.
This brings us up to the board response to superintendent's comments. Mr. Claffey? No comment? Ms. Lampier?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's really nice to come in here and have the people that, you know, Mike from the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Adam, both say, collaboration is like the word of the day. And it's a really good feeling, and I think that's part of the reason why the school started off on such a good note this year. So thank you, Dr. Andre.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, Dr. Andre, and congratulations to the students who worked so hard this summer. And I was listening to their list of activities this year, and gosh, they are both very, very busy. So I'm sure that their families are incredibly proud of them. Good job.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Johnson? Thank you for the comments. I, I know we all have kids in the school, and I think everybody came home last week feeling pretty excited for the rest of the year. So that's all I care about. But yeah, it was, it was a great kickoff, so I think it's going to be a fantastic school year. And now I will hand it over to Mr. Rogers. And now I will hand it over to Mr. Rogers.
Not much to say today besides the National Meals for Kids program sounds amazing, especially coming from a family who qualified for free lunch up until last year. It'd just be really great to end food insecurity in Nashua. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, we are kind of light on the committees this week, huh? So no budget, no finance, no policy, no curriculum. And that brings us right up to HR.
Thank you. Ms. Gilio is out this week. So Ms. Brown and I handled the HR committee meeting this evening. So I make a motion to suspend the rules as the committee just met this evening so that we can discuss and vote on what we worked on.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Brown. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Any opposed? Figured I'd just keep going. All right. I'm sorry, I lost count. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six. Okay, six to zero. All right, so my motion is to approve the revised personnel recommendations dated 9/6/2022 that were distributed at the beginning of this meeting. Everyone should have a copy in front of them. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All those in favor of adopting the personnel recommendations dated September 6, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. That's all I have for now. So it was exciting to see that we had some new hires.
Yes.
Hopefully we'll have some more new hires, but at this point, I think it's fingers crossed and praying.
Sounds like we're doing pretty well in hiring and getting stuff filled. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, and can we just go back a little bit to finance and operations? Since we finished, are we done with HR?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to ask Mr. Donovan, since we've got a memo here about the Chromebooks for the middle schools, can you bring something to the meeting to give us an update on that at our next meeting? Because there's 1.1 Chromebooks at the middle schools where we are reviewing the distribution of strategy of Chromebooks at the middle school level. So I'd like to kind of get an update at our meeting. Is that possible?
Sure. Well, yeah, if you can share that with me and then we'll put it on the agenda for, it moved to Monday, correct?
Monday, right, because of the primary. Thank you, Ms. Lampier. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee revisits before we move on? Seeing none, let's move on to, we have no liaison reports, no unfinished business, and we are going into new business now. I will hand this over to you, Dr. Andre.
Thank you. So the first item is placement on the salary schedule, and there's an MOU in your packet. Essentially, as mentioned earlier on public comments, this MOU is eliminating a practice that dates back to 1986 where if there was a breach in service for longer than five years, then an educator would return back to step zero. So...
Can I just interrupt you for one second, just because I have voluntary transfers first and then placement on the salary schedule? Are those? This is the agenda for today? You don't have it?
Nope.
Okay, never mind.
I'm sorry, that's not on the agenda that was posted.
I am getting mine from my email, so there is a good chance that I jumped again. Okay, sorry, continue on. I apologize.
So essentially what this MOU is doing is it's following the contract language that says that the district will place a new hire on the appropriate step and scale. But there was a procedure, internal procedure that dated back to 1986. So we're eliminating that so that an educator would just be placed on the appropriate scale even if they had a break in service. It's a MOU that I fully endorse. It's impacting maybe this year and last year under 10 teachers.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, can I ask, why wasn't this in the contract that we're coming back with an MOU after we just signed the contract? I'm just kind of curious. We just did a whole contract. It went on.
Right. I don't recall that even coming up as a request during the contract negotiations. Having seen it, I think it's appropriate and I fully support it, but I don't recall in any of our discussions that being a request for a change.
I get it. But now it's coming up as a change after the contract was signed and it came before the full board and we voted on the contract. That's what my concern is, that are we going to keep coming up with MOUs because something needs to be changed after the fact? That it should have been brought up during the contract time? I mean, how long were we in negotiation for? And I remember when two members came on the board, tried to rush this whole thing through even faster.
Dr. Andre?
If I may, so this MOU, I think where the, where it gets a little confusing. So the contract language actually will not change. And so there's no revision. So when you're reviewing the contract and you read it, it's pretty straightforward saying the administration will place a teacher on the appropriate step. So at first glance, that's not going to come out and say, "I think we need to change that." Really, it goes back to this procedure for determining initial placement that came out of HR, that it was more that procedural of HR function that actually placed a teacher onto that step. So I just don't think it was really evident. So it's really, we're not changing the contract language, we're really changing the internal decision-making that was coming out of the HR office.
You know, we were given this, this, you know, I'm surprised that these things don't go into any committee so we can sit and talk about it in committee. It comes to the full board and then we have to vote on it without really doing very much studying to really back reference on all of this. And so now here we are at the full board meeting, and it doesn't go into any committee to discuss it at committee level.
Ms. Raymond?
I take Ms. Johnson's point to heart, and I wonder if when negotiating an MOU, we ought to have a board member be part of that process, at the very least to sit in, because the contracts are legally between the board and the unions. So I think Ms. Johnson has a valid point in suggesting that, I would say, moving forward, I wouldn't personally hold these up, but I think it might be a good idea. We don't need to reconvene an entire negotiating team, but perhaps whoever negotiated the last contract, or simply ask for volunteers like we usually do for negotiations. I don't know, so that the board has some updates along the way as we do with the other contract negotiations.
But you're still asking us tonight to vote on this without going into a committee and discussing it in a committee and bringing it out of the committee like we do with everything else, basically, which we're supposed to do versus being everything at the full board? Because how many times are things in a committee come out and we're said, "But it was in committee, and that's where you should have discussed it." So I'm not really 100% comfortable on voting on this tonight.
Well, I think typically the MOUs come to the full board and we discuss them here. And I think specifically in regards to, you know, contract language, it's something that we would want to discuss as a full board anyway. So if we sent it back to committee, we would probably end up having the same conversation at a full board anyway. And in regards to what this MOU is covering, I think it's, I think Mr. Markku spoke to it, and I think Dr. Andre spoke to it, is just the unfair practice that we've done for people who choose to take off time. And I think it specifically, you know, interferes with the career path of women who typically take time off to parent their children, and then we're pushing them all the way back to a level zero because they're making a choice to be at home for a certain amount of years. I don't think there's any harm in saying, "Step back into the role that you left at." So I don't see the harm in pushing this MOU forward. And I also have a hard time figuring out which committee it would best go to, HR, finance. I think it would fit into all of the committee policy, into all of the committees by bringing it to the full board and kind of cuts down on the redundancy. With that... Sorry, I don't know if the audience knows. You're having some technical difficulties. The past, it was like a cell phone too close. No, they said that was a...
No.
That wasn't wrong. Okay. Do we want to wait, or should I just go ahead and make a call? I feel like one second. Dr. Andre, do you want to add anything?
No, I appreciate Ms. Johnson's comments, and if we have the chance to see job people, I'd be happy to do so.
But for now, I think...
Speak real loud. I was wondering, because I wasn't a part of negotiations, but were any other parts of the contract assigned to a committee? So...
There's a negotiating team.
I understand that. And that's, you were saying, maybe in the future, one of us would be asked to join an MOU meeting, but there's no, to not assign this to a committee, I think, is reasonable based on past practice.
This is going to drive me crazy. I'm sorry. I know. I keep waiting it for it to stop so we can keep going on.
Is it because the, there's a microphone on or no?
No, it's just the, it's the internal wiring that's going on up there, and it's not, there's a lot of other stuff that we have to deal with in upgrading our system so that doesn't happen anymore. But...
All right.
Well, we'll deal with what's on the agenda right now.
Well, I'll make the motion since we seem to not have anybody else talking. I move that we approve the MOU with the Nashua Teachers Union regarding the placement on salary schedule.
I'll second that. Any comments or questions? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Do we have any abstentions? No?
So the second MOU we got in the Franklin Street preschool paraeducators, just a highlight of this MOU, essentially because Franklin Street School isn't ready at this current time, and we had to relocate to the Boys and Girls Club, it's a shorter school day for paraeducators. We don't think they should be harmed in that move, so we're just making sure that they're fully compensated for providing the instructional supports to our students. So while they're having a shorter school day, that we're paying them for their full time.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Raymond?
My question is about costing for this. So paraeducators, as part of their contract, are able to take time off, as everybody is. How does that affect them if they're leaving every day now till 2:15 but being paid till a later time? Would they still have to use their PTO in order to do those things? How does that work out?
No, they're just held harmless, so it's the same working condition. So they don't have to use PTO or sick time for that extra hour. I know the building administrators have also asked them to provide extra duties as well. But again, we're holding those employees harmless in this transition.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brown?
And is there an update on when the Franklin Street building will be ready?
We did a walkthrough, what was that, last week? Thursday. I'm glad we didn't promise early September, but we're still looking at November transition. So they're making a lot of headway, but I think it's still going to be a soft opening November 1st around Thanksgiving time.
Ms. Brown?
And just to clarify, when the students move back to the building, will re-extend the school day to a regular school day and inform the parents and all that?
That's correct. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Are they, I have a question. I know probably going from where they're located now and into other schools probably adds some drive time in there, but if we were ever low on substitutes and needed to fill in, would they, would we be able to move those pairs into other positions to help out if we needed them? Or are they school-bound?
So I don't think the timing of the day, logistically, would get them into a different building to actually service for the last 15, 20 minutes of school. So...
Right.
Time and effort might just, might not make it possible.
It's hard enough going down Riverside at 2 o'clock anyway. Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I move to accept the MOU with regarding the Franklin Street preschool paraeducators.
I'll second it. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Claffey? Yeah. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll give the floor back to you, Dr. Andre.
Thank you. So the last MOU is for the teaching extra class. It's an extension from last year. There was an MOU in place that expired on June 30th. So we're extending this MOU for this upcoming year. And we just added some additional language to clarify what does it mean for that additional coverage. There was some, or teaching of a class, or really highlighting the responsibility of teaching, planning, and grading for those days. And then also, if a teacher only covers a class and is not teaching, instead of sending five classrooms down to the cafeteria, if a teacher is supervising a class, that's a different rate. So we just, this MOU just clarifies the difference between being the full-time instructor for an additional class period as opposed to supervising a study hall that's still in the assigned math classroom. But it's an extension from last year.
Ms. Brown?
So so far since the beginning of school, how many classes is this going to affect?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I would be more than happy to get. So I know at North and South, there's a few, I can get the specifics, but I think North and South, it's mostly in the math department that they took on an extra section. It might be a total of nine sections at the high school. There hasn't been any impact at the elementary level, other than a split of like special education caseloads, but nothing that would fall into this MOU. And at the middle school, I'm not aware of any instances that this would come in place, but I can get the numbers from the high school because I know there's a handful of sections that we had a fine coverage for.
Okay. Go ahead. And how would this affect teachers who are currently co-teaching or team teaching? Would that, would they get extra compensation if only one of the teachers was there that day, or is that already built into the team dynamic?
Great question. So I would kind of research what we did previously if one teacher was out. And I don't think there's additional compensation. It was kind of more of that past practice. So they're not taking on additional responsibilities, additional teaching for that day. So it's not, so essentially, we're at the high school, if you're teaching, they're eliminating their prep period and taking up a different section, and that's the full teaching load. So that's where the extra compensation comes in. So it's, and then the other instances is you're on your prep period, and there's no coverage for Mr. Donovan's math class. So you're giving up your prep period, covering his class, and being compensated for that. So if one teacher is out on any given day, that doesn't fall under this MOU.
So the intent is this compensation would come if someone is using, is... So, the intent is this compensation would come if someone is using, is kindly using their prep period to step up and help out?
Correct.
Go ahead. Ms. Raymond? I'll make the motion. I move to approve the revised MOU with the NTU regarding teaching an additional class through the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lampier. I have one follow-up, and correct me, board, if I'm wrong, but we were getting updates, and I feel like at the end of the school year, we were having a discussion about how often we were getting these updates on absences and how often the classrooms were combining. I think the motion's still out there that we were, did you guys, I know I was like, I think I'm done with this, but what did we end up voting?
I want to say we said through October, and we'd revisit then. So, I think we did actually want to see it, and I could be through the end of the calendar year, but I think we did extend it so that we could have updates to make sure that we have...
Right there, in my calendar.
Oh, well done. What day is it on your calendar?
It's just we're reviewing it in October, so I need to put it on the agenda.
All right, so I think it was a... Monthly or at each meeting?
It was, we walked it down to monthly.
Monthly.
And then revisit the necessity of it in October. So, that may be helpful with this ongoing MOU. But, okay, all those in favor, did we vote? No, because I started talking again.
No, that's good. I'm just going to write that down. So, go ahead.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson, motion passes. This now brings us up to our final second public comment period. I don't see anybody else here besides Mr. Mark Hu, unless he wants to come back up and speak some more. We are done. We are now on to board member comments. I'll start off on this side this time, Ms. Johnson, board member comment.
I'm sorry, I was going to ask a question.
Yeah.
Liaison reports, can we do the JS?
Oh, yeah, we skipped right over that.
Two weeks ago, can we do that at the next meeting?
Right, because Ms. Gilio isn't here, but she had asked you to write them up, right?
Correct.
Do you want to give them really quickly?
If you want me to do it now, or you want to wait until the next meeting? I'm not looking for a camera, believe me, but I don't want to...
Did you get all gussied up for this?
I just, I took some notes. So, if it's...
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't see Ms. Gilio, so I walked right over it.
No problem. So, two weeks ago, the JS BCC meeting took place as far as the McCarthy Middle School goes. The, there are these slabs that have been laid, there are four areas labeled A through D. One of the slabs, I believe, is in the front. They've already begun constructing a frame on that. The other thing I learned, which I didn't know, is the address for the McCarthy Middle School is 41D Antonio Drive. I didn't know that. Please jump in. If I left something out, that was kind of important. The new colors, I'm sorry, the existing colors have been approved, red and black for the gym and the school. That's about it for the McCarthy. As far as Pennachuck goes, the gym is scheduled to open at the end of this month, and the library, just before the holidays, December 22nd. Fairgrounds, I think the library is done or almost done?
I think it's almost done.
Almost done. And there's some new anti-scoff wall paneling in the student center, so. Big doings at Franklin Street. The second floor is still underway, and we had some new guests from a company called Energy Efficiency Investments, and they're overhauling the entire HVAC system. They ripped out asbestos, putting in new ducts, and the good news is Esser is paying for that. And then finally, Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, Harvey has been approved as the contract manager for that, and the next meeting is 9:22.
Should we note they were the only ones to show up?
I had only, there was only one bid, if you're wondering, and then we just approved a lot of money.
Yeah, we did. I wrote all those notes. It's exhausting. All right, thank you so much for that report. Okay, so, Mr. Claffey, do you want to keep going with your board member comments?
Of course, I love to talk. I just said one thing. Congratulations to new North head football coach and Elm Street teacher Chad Zebolus, who made his debut last week with a win against Bedford.
Woo-hoo. That was a fun... Ms. Lampier?
No comments.
No comments? Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, no, I just want to bring everyone's attention to, next weekend, Nash will be having their 17th, I think, annual multicultural festival. This year, it's at Greeley Park. The library has a bunch of family-oriented things going on this week. There's like learning how to do some Bollywood dances and some other stuff, if you check out their website. The Arlington Street Community Center is having a community gathering next weekend as well, and if you go to their website, you can preregister for that. That'll be some free family fun, so get out there while we have the beautiful weather.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Johnson?
No, the weather wasn't so beautiful yesterday and today. I couldn't, it's like the middle of winter for me right now. I'm so cold. But we need the rain. But anyway, I'm hoping that we will be, as a board, be able to get into Pennachuck and see how beautiful that school is, and I've asked several times that we can get and see the update of what's happening at Franklin Street School, and maybe another tour of Fairgrounds Middle School, where it's basically all done now, so we could see all the wonderful work that's been done, and so we could see our students having nice refurbished buildings to be in. That's nice, clean, and safe. That's it. Thank you.
I have nothing to add, I'm just, I'm happy that we're, this is my favorite time of the year, all this calendar stuff and getting things underway, so this is my Christmas. So, I'm just a happy camper right now. Oh, you should see my calendar. Looks like I have no friends, but it's very cool. But with that, I have nothing else to add. Mr. Rogers went earlier.
Oh, you have to go twice?
No, unless you want to.
I'm all right. Thank you.
And with that?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, on the motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. It is 7:02 PM.